Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, May 16, 2011. Welcome to our official city council meeting. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just.
And to make this meeting official, I'd ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll, please.
Hesha.
Here.
Guttenhoff.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Wilmsky.
Here.
York, absent.
Hippskin.
Here.
Healy, absent.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have an official quorum. I will go on to our next item on the agenda, which is presentations. And we have with us tonight a very unique and, I think, a highly achieving group from District 205 and from York High School. Actually, Mr. Ken Ross is here. He's one of the teachers. He actually is the director of the vocational program at York High School, which is, you know, York High School, and I'm a little biased because I drank the water for four years there, is one of the most highest comprehensive high schools in this country. They offer everything from all the core curriculums, including vocational classes, which reinforce those core curriculums. And every year, actually, the next group of winning individuals next to our cross-country team, which is the most winning cross-country team in the country, is our vocational education side of York High School, which has produced more state champions. Not many people realize that. But today, Mr. Ken Ross is here. Ken, if you'd like to take the podium and introduce the state qualifiers. And I believe we've got some state placeholders and some, I believe even some possible state champions. And I know you've got a couple of teachers with you, so take it away, Mr. Ken Ross.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for having us here tonight. It's a distinct honor to be able to bring our students before you to see what your community does in Elmhurst. It's a wonderful community. I've been here for 17 years, working at York High School, and it's a phenomenal place for both people to work and for students to get educated and achieve some great things. Along with me tonight is Mr. Joel Stoles. He's our graphic arts teacher. And Mr. Ron Roback, he's our automotive teacher. We work so closely with the students. We felt it was appropriate if they came along with today, too, to share in the success of our students. What I'd like to do first is call up our students, and in order. Trevor, if you want to come on up. And then I've got Chris Taylor and John Will Coxon. Then Alex Fizette, Adam Heft, Dana Munger, Mitch Alomarong, Christian Craig, Josh Nelson, Andrew Blesz, Santiago Ortega, Nick Freitag, Zane Johns, and Anthony Conno. Oh, did I miss anybody? No, I did not. I thought I'd bring them all up here so that when I read about them, we can, I can put them out here and go, hey, it's Trevor. As I said, you know, I wanted to thank the mayor and the city council for having us here this evening and taking some time. Also, I wanted to take a moment to thank all the parents that are here of our kids. We could not do our jobs without the support of the parents. And these fine individuals that are in front of you today are the product. I don't want to sound like it's something that was made, but they are definitely a product of their parents' caring and love for them as they've grown up and gone through school. And it would be very, you know, I just feel it's really important to thank you guys, so thanks. The first students that we're going to be recognizing today, oh, and one other thing, let me get Nick Cosentino up here. We'll put you up on the backside here. I got all caught up with the Skills USA first. Skills USA is a national organization that's got 300,000 members across the country. And our program is a state and national student organization that promotes subject matter, career excellence, community service, and hands-on skill competitions at both the state and national levels. Currently at York, our students participate in Skills USA in automotive technology, drafting CAD, cabinet making, graphic arts, screen print technology, and principles of physics technology. Last February, our students took a written test. And this is kind of the unique part about Skills USA, is we have to have the cognitive side, too. The kids have to take a test on a Saturday morning against every other student in the state of Illinois. And it's not, did you get an A, B, or C? It's a raw score. Whoever gets the top scores get invited to go downstate to compete. So it's not something, just because you were there, you get to go. You had to really study hard to get the cognitive side, take a good, you know, pretty decent test, and then you're invited downstate. And that is really, really, I think, really important for our kids here, to see that they do get the cognitive side. And once they get downstate, we're down there for three days, and we get them up way early in the morning on a Friday. And then they compete for four to six hours in a hands-on project or activity to demonstrate the student's ability to think, problem-solve, and perform in their area of specialty. As I brought these students up today, I want to introduce you. In Adobe Photoshop design, it was Trevor Gully, right here. In automotive service tech, it was Chris Taylor. Give a wave there. John Will Coxon, where are you at, John? John?
He's working on the Trans Am.
He what? Did he disappear on us? Okay. In cabinet making, we had Alex Fizette. Adam Heft. And Dana Munger. In collision repair, we had Mitch Alomarong. And Christian Craig. In graphic communications, we had Josh Nelson. And power equipment technology was Andrew Blesz. And principles of technology was Santiago Ortega. And Nick Freitag. And in full-service auto, we had Zane Johns. And in technical drafting, we had Anthony Conno. Nick, I'm not going to forget you down there. Don't worry about it. At this time, I want to recognize our fourth state winners. Zane Johns placed second in full-service auto competition. Congratulations, John. Next, I'd also like to recognize Trevor Gully for placing second in Adobe Photoshop. And next, I'd like to recognize Santiago Ortega, who placed second in principles of And Nick Freitag, who placed first in state in principles of technology. By taking first place, Nick Freitag and myself will be representing the city of Elmhurst, Elmhurst District 205, York High School, and the state of Illinois by competing against students from all other 49 states, Puerto Rico, and Guam, at the Skills USA National Conference and Competition in Kansas City this June 20th through 26th. So best of luck to Nick. Next, I'd like to congratulate Nick Cosentino for placing second in the state for introductory CAD at the State Drafting Educators Association, or IDEA, competition held this past April And finally, these hard-working, skilled young people, along with the students who did not place in the top three at the state level, but still did achieve greatness by going down, represented York High School and our community very well, and we are very proud of them. Congratulations to all the winners, and thanks again for your support.
Thank you, Ken. And also want to thank Diana Smith, who I know couldn't be here tonight, the principal of York High School. And thank you for all of the, you know, the taxpayers that support these programs. You know, we talk about economic development up here, and that's one of the big roles for us, is to drive the tax base, to grow that tax base, because almost 70% of the little over that goes to our school district. These programs, if we don't have these revenues coming in, and these programs aren't here, I know many of us fought for those programs, and all of Mulliner went through those programs just like I did when we were at York. They're very, very important. They move kids on, they go to college, they give kids a career choice and passion in what they do. And I think many of us are living proof of that. So, Ken, thank you for all your help and hard work. And I've got certificates for everyone. I'll actually give these to Mr. Ross, or if you'd like me to pass them out.
I could give it to you here.
Perfect, yeah.
Whatever you'd like to do. Okay. Josh Nelson? We have to work on that.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out from York High School, for the teachers, the coaches, the students, and the parents. If you'd like, because the meeting will be going into in-depth, and we'll probably be going for a while, I'll give you a few minutes if you want to. You're welcome to stay, but most of the time, this could be very long. It's up to you. But you're welcome to leave at this time, or if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay, too. We'll give a minute or so for the room to clear.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Is anyone here from the Kickoff for Kids organization by chance?
They are? Okay. Beautiful. Next on the agenda is our presentation of our Teacher of the Month award, I believe, from Kickoff for Kids. And Tammy Dosboy? Did I say it right? I apologize. If you'd like to come up to the podium real quick, that'd be great. With us is Cheryl Issa, who is actually representing the Kickoff for Kids organization. Kickoff for Kids organization is a non-for-profit, 501(c)(3) charity that is local here in Elmhurst. Michael Spies, I believe, is the president. He's done a great job. I work with Mike on ECAF for many years, and they help kids. Bottom line, anything that kids need, they're there to help. In particular, this past year, with our mayor for the day, you know, money's been tight at City Hall. We used to fund a trip to Washington, and we had stopped doing that about two years ago. I called up Michael Spies. I said, you know, this is something we'd like to reinstate. They wrote the check, and they got that young child from visitation school, I believe it was, to go to Washington. And so they do a great, great job. They fill a lot of void in Elmhurst with a variety of things, and I'll let Cheryl speak about more.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm Cheryl Issa. I'm on the board of directors for Kickoff for Kids. And as the mayor mentioned, we raise money through special events to help enrich the lives of children in our community. And some of the things, as you mentioned, as well as giving some scholarship money, we're currently sponsoring the Elmhurst Public Library. We've sponsored some Kid Zones at the new Elmhurst Memorial Hospital. And we're always looking for opportunities to put the money back into the community. And one of the things that we started this year is what is called the Star Educator Award, and that's why I'm here tonight. We are doing this to help put the money back into the teachers that have helped us and recognize their commitment to our students. And in order to be nominated, a parent or a student can submit a letter just telling us how great their teacher is in 300 words or less. So our first award, which we're proud to present tonight, is going to Ms. Tammy Dosboy. And if I could just read a couple of quick things that her nominee said about her. She mentioned your classroom management skills, the classroom's adaptability to student needs, and the collaborative structured environment you foster. The nominee also commented, "I really like how she continues to build on what they have learned, so that the process seems natural to them and not overwhelming." As a parent, I enjoy her weekly newsletters. She is always available to answer any questions that I have, but even more impressive is that she is proactive with her information, so questions are answered before I can even ask them. And I personally have had the chance to have Mrs. Dosboy teach two of my children, and I can't say enough about her. So we are proud to present this to her. Congratulations, Tammy. Kickoff for Kids has given Tammy a $300 gift certificate for school supplies for the following year, and then a Star Educator plaque. So if you know any teachers that you would like to nominate, go to our website, kickoffforkids.org, submit that letter, and we would love to be doing this on a monthly basis throughout the school year.
good people doing a lot of good things, and students and teachers accomplishing their dreams, and that's what it's all about. So on to our next portion of our meeting, which is the receipt of written communications and our petitions from the public. At this time, if there is anyone with any written communications and our petitions, if you would please rise and present those to Clerk Spencer, who's here up on my right-hand side here. Anybody with any written communications and our petitions? Okay. Seeing none, I go on the public forum. Clerk Spencer, is there anyone signing up for public forum today?
Yes, we have four people. Gilbert Fisher, 586 West Van Aken.
All right. Mr. Fisher, naturally, we always have three minutes, and it's good to hear from you.
I'm Gilbert Fisher at 586 North Van Aken Street. And for five years, I've been coming to this council complaining about the condition of my streets, the condition of my sewers. When it rains, the water backs up, and the condition of the water coming into my house, it has fine sand in it. And for five years, the city of Elmhurst has done nothing in my community around my house to help me. But the city of Elmhurst has done one thing very well, and that's raised my taxes. Let me give you an example. My house taxes. 2009, the city section of my house taxes was $70. 2010, it's $197. And in 2011, this year, it went up to $241. Amazing. There's no inflation in the United States. And when I pay my telephone bill, chunk, chunk, the city of Elmhurst gets a section of it. My electric bill, chunk, chunk, the city of Elmhurst gets a section of that. My gas bill, chunk, chunk, the city of Elmhurst gets something of that. When I take my wife out to dinner, I pay a tax to the city of Elmhurst for the privilege of eating in the city of Elmhurst. Yet the city of Elmhurst cannot improve my conditions in my community around my house. You cannot drive down the street in front of my house without the car going blab, 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 over all the ups and downs and cracks and crevices. This is utterly ridiculous. You are the United States government, and the only thing you can do to us citizens is tax us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Next, we have Nicolette Velenkort. She's from Westchester.
I don't know if I can compete with that, but good evening. My name is Nicolette Velenkort, and I'm the Learning Resource Director and Librarian for Jefferson Elementary School. I am here tonight to speak about the importance of the Elmhurst Historical Museum to the Elmhurst community. I have come to appreciate the role that the museum plays in the education of the students here in Elmhurst. Part of District 205's social studies curriculum includes the study of local history and changes over time. The museum has always played a significant part in accomplishing this goal through school visits, field trips, and the Ruth Strand poster contest. A personal experience I had with the museum came about in December 2009, when I contacted the museum staff for assistance with a grant I was writing about our second-grade Elmhurst History Research Project. I received a letter of recommendation from Brian Berghager, thank you, and submitted my grant application to the American Library Association. I am sure that the museum letter helped play an important part in the Jefferson School Library receiving the Sarah Jafarian School Library Program Award for exemplary humanities programming, which is, in fact, a national award. We also received $4,000 to use for our library. In closing, I would like to publicly thank the museum's staff and volunteers for their cooperation with our school district and dedication to making the museum accessible to our students. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Good evening, all. My name is Claude Pagash, live at 566 West Gladys. Had some time since the council was a meeting to reflect on what was left behind by the council last year. Well, we didn't get a new city manager. Seemed like the council was a little worried about elections. We did get an increase in property taxes. We did get a gas tax. But somehow, the council could not increase the income of an individual so he could get a tax kickback from the city. A whole year's passed. Nothing happened. Interesting, isn't it? And then we had a problem with the sidewalks. We don't know if we want sidewalks on half a block, a block, one side, outside of the block. Seems like that just got lost in this grand problem of the city. Can't understand why. It's a year later. And then we do have a little problem about $2.5 million that seems to have wound up in the lawyer's hands. Haven't heard anything about the $2.5 million. Wonder why? Oh, yes, we've had flooding. Well, we had flooding for years, and the council didn't do anything about it. Now we got real flooding, and with the flooding, we got power outages. Nothing seems to have worked out that way after that. Grand statement by the council, "We gotta do something." Almost a year later, we're still talking about what we're gonna do. Yeah, and then we have replacements of streets on the north side. That seemed to have fell through the whole year. Poor people up there. Well, that's the way it is. Yes, and then we did find out that the city has invested a great deal of money in Elmhurst Hospital. I just hope that last year was the last year we have to invest in Elmhurst Hospital. And when they do come back here and they need a variance on an ordinance, would you kindly just tell them to stay down on their side of the town? If they get one more variance, we won't even know what they're doing down there.
Thank you, Claude.
Daniel Cusack, OS 759 Kirk.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Cusack, C-U-S-A-C-K. I'm here to speak about the Elmhurst Hospital development in our neighborhood. And in about six weeks, the new hospital development will finally open, and no one will be happier than myself. After three long years, finally, we might see the end of construction trucks, dust, noise, and all, everything else that goes along with that. However, problems still remain. The hospital publicly stated and testified in this very room that berms and landscaping would be put in place to insulate the neighbors from the parking lot noise and car headlights. Specifically, a four- to six-foot-tall berm would be built on the south side of Harvard Street. Additionally, because the hospital did not provide adequate space for a berm around the energy center, landscaping was promised to enclose the natural gas lines and valves to reduce their noise. I invite, no, I challenge, anyone to come and stand in my backyard and see if Elmhurst Hospital met those promises. Come see a berm that's only two feet tall at places along the south side of Harvard and listen to the constant loud hissing noise from the gas line and valves. And imagine trying to sleep in the summertime with an open window, with the constant drone of the Elmhurst Hospital air conditioners and the gas line hissing. Where are the Elmhurst inspectors? Who follows up on the promises and the plans that the hospital has submitted to the city? If a homeowner were to say he was going to put a three-foot-tall fence around his yard and turn around and put a six-foot-tall fence, you'd be all over him, and you'd make him change it. At the very least, the hospital should be held accountable and forced to provide the four- to six-foot-tall berms that they promised and to insulate the neighborhood from those gas lines. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more. Kathleen Sullivan, 133 Pine Street.
Kathleen Sullivan, 133 Pine Street. I'd like to thank you for sending the report that was supposed to come the third week of every month, of every month from here on forward on the stormwater remediation. Before the city council meeting, the second one of each month, we'll be getting that report. However, I thought we would also see that on the agenda tonight, and I didn't see it on the agenda, but I do hope to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public forum.
Okay. I will officially close the public forum at this time and go on to our consent agenda. I will officially close the public forum at this time and go on to our consent agenda and ask if there is anyone that has a question or might want to vote no on any particular item. Please indicate that at this time. Anybody? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Alderman Wagner, seconded by Alderman Brown, and Clerk Spencer, if you'd please call the roll.
Wagner.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York. Absent. Hippskin.
Aye.
Healy. Absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Morley.
Aye.
Oliner.
Aye.
Pezza.
Aye.
Gudenkopf.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents. That consent agenda passes in its entirety. Onto item number six, reports of recommendations of appointed elected officials. Myself being first up. You know. Basically, right now, we are focused on hiring our next city manager, and that's in progress, and we're deliberating, and we'll keep that process going. It's probably the biggest mission that we have. Committee appointments will be coming out next Monday at a special council meeting and also followed by committee of the whole meeting for next week. So we will have those out as well, too. So that's it from me. Any questions or anybody else that'd like to add to that? Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess if you have a report on O'Hare Western Access today, if you could share that for us all. If not, could we possibly get some type of update at the next city council meeting?
Well, I can give you, we actually just had a meeting with Congressman Roscom's office today. Actually, City Manager Borchardt and myself personally attended. We are looking for funding, naturally. It's about a $3.6 billion project. We expressed to the congressman the significance of this project being of one of national significance and one of the largest projects that's in need in the country, and also one that is in the middle of the country, which virtually half of the congressional district or delegate, I would say, utilizes being O'Hare Airport. So he is fully aware, and we're asking for, you know, a bipartisan effort. We have a congressman now in leadership. We have a US senator in leadership. We have bipartisan mayors from both Cook and DuPage County in agreement. So that was the length of the discussion. You know, he was very clear to us that earmarks are not going to be a possibility in this next two-year session. So this will have to be part of a transportation bill, which actually, when I was in Washington with many of the mayors, we lobbied Congressman Mika, who is now the, there were some challenges happening with the elections. We lobbied both sides, and Mika turned out to be the chairperson of Transportation, who is in favor of this project and understands its significance and would support this as well, too. But it's gonna have to be part of a full transportation bill. But I think it warrants that magnitude, and I expressed to the congressman that if we can get this fully funded, we'd love to have ramps at Grand Avenue. They are an option in the plan, but one, if not fully funded, may fall off. So I impressed to him how important it was, especially for the north side of Elmhurst, that they were kept in there, and for our car dealers, for our industrial park. We've got that little industrial park off of County Line Road, which has some large companies like McMaster Car and large employers that would benefit. So all of those things were impressed today with Congressman's office, and there were probably seven or eight communities that were represented from both Cook and DuPage County as well, too. So we're working with this with the tollway, because this will more than likely be a tollway project, so it can be funded. And so we're working with Director Kristi LaFleur at that level, and Chairman Cronin is fully in support of this. He's been calling meetings as well, too. But it's gonna have to be a full team effort. So also in discussion, as a side note, was North Avenue and the eastbound exit off of 294 at North Avenue, which I know Alderman Palomsky and Alderman Brown are of great importance. And I impressed to the congressman that's a very important problem that we need to have resolved, and we necessarily can't wait for Western Access to happen for that particular issue. So it's gonna be about an $11 million fix for that problem, and Western Access is about $3.6 billion. So we would like to keep those issues, although working together separate so that if one doesn't get funded right away, that we can get the issue at North Avenue resolved, hopefully sooner than later.
Just to follow up with it. First off, I'd like to thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you for being on the ball and being able to give us a status update. Secondly, it's my impression that the planning aspects of Western Access is continuing forward, but it's just the financial, to actually make the project happen, is a little bit stalled. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, it's funding that's stalling it. It's, I think we all agree that the project is important and significant. It's a regional project, and it should be done. The question is, who's gonna write the check, you know? And one of the options was local municipalities pitching in, and that's a concern we have, because they're talking of potentially doing an SSA along that corridor, which would have higher taxes for those businesses to help supplement the cost. And we actually spoke to us not being supportive of that, if at all possible, because we felt that it would put a burden on those local businesses there. And, you know, we think that with all of the support, both at the state level, at the federal level, and given the leadership we have on both sides of the aisle, that we're hoping, and the significance of this being a regional, national significant project in the middle of the country, that they would see fit to fund it and not necessarily put the burden on the municipalities, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports or questions? Okay. Go on to item number B, or letter B, I should say. Our 2011, 2013 City Council Orientation Review of Policies and Practices. City Manager Borchardt and City Attorney Strain will be presenting this. Being that we have a new council, we do this quite frequently when the council changes over to educate some of the new aldermen, as well as re-educate some of the current aldermen and also the current mayor. Sure we stay on our toes.
Well, while this is firing up, I would like to apologize. The Stormwater Monthly Report, as discussed under the public forum, was distributed Thursday. I think it was in the press packet. It's been posted on the city website. It should have been part of the city council meeting in a written format. I have nothing to add to that written report. It was the intention that it would be part of the reports on the third Monday of each month. Again, I apologize. The report was distributed, but wasn't actually posted on the agenda. We will correct that going forward. And as the attorney sides are getting set, we do have a quick city council orientation, some review on policies and practices. We have an agenda, a quick introduction. The legal side will then provide a report on the matters which are of import for the city council relative to issues which legal advisors are first and foremost on. We'll do a quick, yet tonight, review of committee of the whole matters, which the city council reviews. And then next Monday night, as Mayor DeCiani introduced earlier, the orientation regarding policies and projects that will run through the four standing committees will be addressed. Just real quickly, what has traditionally set the stage for all of the city's work and efforts in a strategic fashion is the mission statement. This is found in many places, the budget book, the website. It's here for your review tonight. You don't need to review it. Do have the definitions and the value statements that support responsive and superior and environment of respect. From a staff perspective, I think, and from a city council strategic perspective, this is important discipline to understand as it supports the foundation of all of the work left, efforts that are put forth by the city council and by the city staff. As it does define the organization, provides standards for all of the work, shapes how the organization responds to issues and to conflicts, and allows council leaders and management leaders to review pros and cons. And then, from that foundation, go forward. It is about character counts for the broader community. It's achieved through this organization chart. This is the current organization chart. And again, the city council is in a matter of a handoff as lead management shifts. My understanding of the mayor and city council will work with lead management going forward. Perhaps there'll be some changes in the organization chart. This reflects the current operation where there is a division at the management level between the manager and assistant manager and other department heads. Just quickly, cousin cousin to the city, local government, is the Public Library. Board of Library trustees operate that library. The nine-member citizen board is appointed by the mayor with the city council's approval. They have powers and duties as outlined in the state law, as identified here. And I will hand off for the city attorney portion of orientation involving those matters which the attorney assists with.
Thank you, Manager Borchardt. This evening, Kate Reifsteiner, a lawyer in my office, is also gonna help me with the presentation. And I wanted to start with the Open Meetings Act. And there are three subjects that will I'm not used to this, so you're gonna have to bear with me. Manager Borchardt may have to do all the clicking here, don't I?
You're doing just fine. We're moving right along.
I'm well into the act. So the intent of the act is the open and transparency in government for the citizens, who are in fact, though Kate's gonna help me, thank goodness. And the act is obviously made great inroads and provided great inroads to citizens to have the open and transparency, as I say, for all citizens to know who their government is. The meetings are to be noticed and held at specific times, and a number of these things are things that all of you are very familiar with. I think the second bullet point is something that I do want to spend just 30 seconds or so talking about. It's the definition under the statute of what is a meeting. And it gets confusing from time to time, but the definition, I won't read it to you, but you can see it there. And the question becomes one of emailing back and forth. And when does that stay within the safe harbor of the Open Meetings Act? And I think the significant words there are contemporaneous, interactive communication. If you're in a contemporaneous communication with more than five people, you have to be concerned that you might be violating the act. There are no cases to give you guidance thus far, no attorney general opinions yet, but a lot of dialogue between municipal lawyers about what is safe and what isn't. But I guess I can only say to you that I will provide you with the updates as we get the attorney general opinions, as they come out, and of course, cases that might give us more direction in this regard. But I think the safe thing to say is if you're concerned about engaging in, and as I say, contemporaneous, interactive communication with more than, with five or more of you, I would say you should refrain from doing that. And as Manager Borchardt has said, and I know most of you know this, but for the new members, it includes a committee. So it becomes problematic if the DPZ, who has three members, are discussing a subject that's on their agenda, pending on their agenda, the zoning, a zoning issue that's on their agenda. To be frank, those members can't have a conversation, a member can't have a conversation with another member about that subject matter, because you'd be violating the majority of the quorum, which is three. So if two of you had that conversation, you'd be violating the act, because it applies to committees. The next slide talks about the quorum. And in Elmhurst, wherein we have a mayor and fourteen aldermen. Majority of the corporate authorities is eight. A majority of the quorum is five. Goes on to talk about discussions that are prohibited by members. It talks about discussion we just had about contemporaneous emails between five or more. But it does, the statute does indicate that just because more than, that five or more of you are in one place together does not mean that you ipso facto have somehow violated the act. You have to be discussing city business when you're in a casual situation. Next slide indicates that as a result of the statute, people are designated officers and are usually employees, who participate in annual training and help guide us through the laws and statutes for the Open Meetings Act. And I must give kudos to the clerk's office and the people that work in the clerk's office, because they work really hard to make sure that we do this appropriately, that we meet our deadlines in posting these meetings. And if we do a good job, it's in large measure, because they're conscientious and pay incredibly close attention to detail with respect to compliance in the act. There are times when discussions can be conducted in closed session, and it's appropriate, and the act provides for it. And these closed meetings have to be, are held outside the presence of the public, and as I say, that is permitted. A motion has to be made, it has to be seconded, and it has to have a roll call vote. And this slide speaks to that process in detail. The agenda. The agenda issue that many of you are aware of is, comes from a case entitled Rice versus Adams County. And basically, what that says is that no action can be taken on a matter unless it's placed on the agenda. And you can have deliberations about issues that are not on the agenda, but you cannot take any action on that, on an item. In fact, the case actually says final action until that matter appears on the agenda. Special meetings. Except in the case of an emergency, public notice of any special meeting, rescheduled meeting, or any reconvened meeting shall be given at least 48 hours before the meeting. Only the items on the agenda of a special meeting may be discussed, unlike a regular meeting of the city council. And then there's another section that talks about reconvened meetings, which is rather cumbersome. But it's intended to try to provide some ease to having meetings that occur in a very rapid succession with no change in the agenda. And that's the third bullet point that you see there. It does, of course, provide that if you do have an emergency, that you have to, as soon as practicable, provide notice. And it also specifically mentions to the news medium, which has filed an annual request for notice. Public taping and filming. Anybody can tape or film our council meetings. There are a few restrictions with respect to those, and the rule, and some of the rules are mentioned here. But the general principle is that if you've seen people have come to the city council meetings and have taped those, and other news medium have done that, and it's clearly permitted. Recent amendments. There are three that are worth calling out and mentioning. There are three that are worth calling out and mentioning. Public bodies must approve minutes of open meetings within 30 days after the meeting or at the second subsequent regularly scheduled meeting, whichever is later. Public bodies must make approved open meeting minutes available for public inspection within 10 days. And last, open meetings now require, I think January 111, require that any person be permitted an opportunity to address the public officials at any meeting under rules established and recorded by the public body. So any publicly called meeting, the public has the right to present comments to the public officials. The next slide is really a reiteration of our City of Elmhurst code, which we abide by and allow the public at each and every city council meeting to address the council as long as they identify themselves and their address. And it's appropriate to provide for any rules and powers come from the ordinance to permit, to regulate and limit that public discussion period or open forum, as we call it. The last slide on this segment is the enforcement. Any person may file a request for review with public access counselor of the attorney general's office. Other bullet points, any person can start a lawsuit in a circuit court against the city if they feel there's a violation of the act. Suit may be brought by the state's attorney, must be brought within 60 days of the meeting alleged to be in violation of the act, and any violation of the act is punishable of a fine up to $1,500. And that's a synopsis of a very comprehensive statute, but I've attempted to give you the highlights of, the guidelines of that statute. Kate, Kate Reifsteiner, who's a lawyer in our office, consults with all of our clients, a number of municipalities, on the Freedom of Information Act. And that has taken on a new sense of importance the last few years. And all units of government are very serious, I mean, all parts of our law firm are very serious about advising our units of government to be very careful with respect to compliance with FOIA requests. And we try very hard to do a good job with that and be completely accessible to the public with respect to compliance with those requirements of the act. So with that, Kate.
I deal with a lot of the FOIA requests in Elmhurst, and I have to thank everyone here because it keeps my day very, very interesting. You have very well-educated citizens who know how to request information, what they are able to have access to. So it makes my job very interesting, and I've learned a lot about the act as a result of you as a client particularly. The intent of the act is access to information, access to information, access to documents, the ability for people to walk into city hall and ask for information so that they know what you're doing, basically. The act promotes transparency and accountability of all areas of government, so it's not just the city. It trickles all the way down to, you know, the smallest subsection of your government that there is. So your plan commissions your committees, they're all, all their information is technically FOI-able. Again, all citizens have the right to full and free access. People are allowed to come in both inspect and copy. There has been some discussion, I think there was some confusion with municipalities, well, if we let them come in and inspect it, do we also have to allow them to have copies? It's interchangeable. They can come in and inspect and then say, hey, can I get copies as well? So it's, they're not a separate concept, they're a uniform concept. The policy behind the act. One thing that changed with the 2010 amendments is that there's no longer a general, I guess, policy against commercial requests. The way the act was phrased originally, it was, you know, not to further a commercial enterprise, this is really for individuals to get access to their government. That's been changed. Now it's, commercial requests are okay so long as they don't unduly burden public resources. What that exactly means, there are no opinions or cases that say that, but it's an interesting switch because it allows people to come in and actually get information from their municipality in order to further their business interests. The second point was also really interesting for a lot of municipalities to take note of because the phrasing of the act is it's a primary duty of public bodies to the people of the state to provide information and open access to government. And the General Assembly recognized, they had no real concern about what the fiscal obligations that put on the city. And I'm sure as a council, you're aware of the fact that there's a lot more time and effort and, you know, staff time and attorney time being spent on Freedom of Information Act requests, and that's exactly why. Because the General Assembly has instructed us, you know, we don't care how much it costs, people get the information that they want. Some things that were defined as public records, well, private information. Private information is home, personal telephone numbers, biometric identifiers, things like that. That's pretty important to note. I think some people, just the general citizen, gets nervous that, you know, their telephone number's gonna get out there once they fill out a building permit application. And that's not true. The law does recognize that there's some things that just shouldn't really be floating around for anybody to look at. Also, to take note of the fact that news organizations, academic, scientific, or public research, those are not commercial requests. So I'll talk about a little later, there's a little different procedure to handle public requests, commercial requests, I'm sorry, and requests from news organizations or scientific research don't enjoy that other procedure. Other public records, just to take note of, use of public funds, anything that involves that is public. Certified payroll records are public. However, it is the only exemption in the act that's mandatory you have to redact addresses, telephone numbers, and social security numbers of the contractor's employees. The city has no obligation to claim any other exemption except for this one. If those, that information is not redacted from certified payroll, you're in violation of the act. Arrest reports and criminal history records, there's certain exceptions as to what those things are, and quite frankly, what they are is still not clear. Is the arrest report, you know, what the police fill out? Is it just the arrest card? There's a lot of different, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I've become very familiar with your police records. What fits arrest report in your police records isn't completely clear under the act. But what they are and that information generally should be available within 72 hours as opposed to, excuse me, the five business days that you're now allowed to reply in. Also, settlement agreements. I know a lot of municipalities struggle with that because years ago, there was that friendly confidentiality clause. Those confidentiality clauses bear no weight anymore. Settlement agreements where the city spends money to settle with somebody, anybody's allowed access to those. So the procedure, as I said, five working days. If the public body doesn't respond within five working days and fails to adequately request an extension of time, you can't get a fee for the copies, you can't claim that the exemption is unduly burdensome. And you're also, which is a great thing that was put in the act now, and it wasn't in there before, was that you can come to an agreement with somebody. You can say, you know, look, we're working on your request, but, you know, it's a lot of information, is it acceptable to you? I've hit something. Is it acceptable to you for us to take 12 days? And the act provides for that now, and we've actually done that in Elmhurst a lot. People have said, yeah, you know, as long as you're working on it, we're okay with it. So that's been helpful. And unduly burdensome requests, I won't bog you down with what that means, but basically, if somebody comes in and asks for a whole category of documents for, say, 20 years, the city usually takes advantage of this procedure and says, look, we find your request to be unduly burdensome, there's no way that the clerk's office can handle giving you that much information or five to 10 business days, can we talk to you about maybe narrowing it? Can we get you to where you wanna go without us having to just flat out deny it? That's been pretty successful. A lot of people appreciate it, and they do limit their requests. If, however, you know, the city and the quester can't come to an agreement, unfortunately, it's a denial of the request, and they can then go and ask for review or take the matter to court. One thing to note, repeated requests from the same person for records that haven't changed or are identical will be unduly burdensome. Sometimes that gets confused because if somebody asks for building permits from, you know, for this information, but then, you know, five more have been filed, it's not the same information. So it's not an unduly burdensome request because there's new building permits out there now. Requests for a commercial purpose, again, there is a more lenient procedure to respond to these. You get 21 days to do A through D there. The interesting thing of A through D, when you get a chance to read them, it doesn't actually require within 21 days that you provide somebody with the documents. You only need to respond in 21 days in one of those four fashions. So the act really gives a lot of leniency and a lot of wiggle room for requests that are clearly commercial because, you know, while there was a full, almost not prohibition, but policy against it in the previous act, this version of the act allows for commercial purpose requests, but allows 21 days to say, here's how much longer it'll take us and this is how much it'll cost for the copies. Also to note, a public body doesn't need to advise requesters regarding the meaning or significance of public records. This is particularly important to city employees because a lot of times, requesters will come and say, okay, well, he gave me this and I don't know what it means. And there's a lot of confusion, and city employees don't generally, and rightfully so, they don't generally feel comfortable enough to say, okay, this is what I think this record means, and the act specifically states that they're not required to do that. So, you know, there's no potential of a city employee giving false information. FOIA officers, pretty much the same as Open Meetings Act officers. They're in charge of the collation, they have a electronic training curriculum that they have to go through, your FOIA officers have. And I just have to tell you that the FOIA officer that I work with most often, Erin Vandewall, is absolutely amazing. She's been probably, if not one of the best, the best FOIA officers that I've worked with. She keeps catalogs of everything, she asks every department what is required. I get information really cleanly, she usually sends it to me electronically, I have the ability to redact electronically, send it back to her, and it's a really streamlined process. So if you're giving out gold stars, if you see her in the hallway, please give her one because she does a really great job. One last thing to note, I believe it's my last slide or maybe my second to last slide. This is something that a lot of municipalities struggle with, but the act now states that public records held by governmental contractors are public records of the city. So anything that your, you know, sewer contractor or any of those contractors have is now a record that you're required as a city to produce to somebody who asks for it. So great example, I've had a couple FOIA requests now for telephone bills or telephone logs from municipalities. And, you know, the first response I usually get from the city employees is, well, we don't have that information. Well, you contract with AT&amp;T to provide your telephone services, this portion of the act requires that you contact AT&amp;T and you attempt to get the information that people are asking for. So especially for past contracts, it's a little bit of an onerous process to try to chase down contractors. I will tell you that I have not seen any affirmative opinions or attorney general statements, or even informal statements, that say what happens if a contractor doesn't give you the document. Who ultimately absorbs the liability for that? I'm not entirely sure, just because it hasn't been dealt with. But yeah, you have to go after. Your contracts now, especially your public works contracts, we put in the certification in our office that we require contractors assigned to say that they'll give us documents if we need them under the Freedom of Information Act, and they'll do anything really we ask them to do to help us to adequately respond within the correct timeframe. So last point, you can file a request for review with the public access counselor. That process is getting better. When I gave these presentations before, it was, you know, good luck, it could take forever, but it is getting better. I'm starting to get, you know, calls from the assistant attorney generals more consistently. Requesters can also file suit. Unfortunately, the act provides that a court shall award attorney's fees if somebody files suit under the FOIA. So if the city were to lose a lawsuit under the FOIA, attorney's fees are part and parcel to the award that the quester would get. Also, if it's a willful or intentional violation of the act, there's a $2,500 to $5,000 penalty that's new in 2010. So it really does pay to be open and give people the documentation they need within the timeframes that are required. And honestly, like I said, your clerk's office and Erin Vandewall really does a great job in talking to people and getting things to people in a very timely fashion.
Thanks, Kate. I wanted to mention too, and I think Kate touched on it, but the city isn't obligated to create a document, which does create some confusion sometimes with citizens. Somebody will come and want an explanation or an answer to a question. The act doesn't provide a methodology for providing an answer to a question or an explanation. It gives you every right to get documents, even documents, as Kate mentions, that are not in our possession. It might be in a contractor's possession, but there's no, you can't use the FOIA as a method to get an answer to a question. You're gonna have to do it the old fashioned way, pick up the phone and call the manager.
And to that point, the act requires that the city have a list, I think it was in one of the slides, I can't remember, but have a list of documents they maintain. And while I'm not aware of any official opinions that state that, or state the reason for it, I would surmise that the reason is, you can provide citizens, if somebody's looking for information, rather than engaging in this Q and A, which the FOIA isn't designed to do, you can sort of give them this list and say, here's the documents that we maintain. See if there's something on this list that could potentially provide you with the information that you're looking for. It sort of just cuts down that, you know, interrogation if it's gonna happen. There's documents that they know that are there from the city, and then from that list they can say, oh, you know what, probably the building permit will tell me that, so.
And you get the idea that both Kate and I value the opportunity to participate with Patty Spencer and her outstanding staff in doing this, but it would be, we would be wrong not to also say that every department, public works, the police department, the fire department, all have designated FOIA representatives, officers, that have to be engaged in this process. Because as much as Patty and Erin and everybody works to do it, they need people in public works, for instance, in Mike's department, division, to provide the support that we need, for instance, from public work. So I guess the story is that we are doing everything we can to comply with the act and more, to provide these documents that the citizens of Elmhurst or any other citizen are entitled to have, and a lot of people work to get that done. I wanted to spend a few minutes on the ethics and state gift ban. And there is a state statute that prohibits employees from accepting gifts from prohibited sources. The operative word there is prohibited sources, which we'll mention in a minute. An employee is defined to include, and it gives you the definition of who's covered by the act. Goes on to give a very broad, as you can see, definition of what's a gift. Gratuity discount, entertainment, hospitality, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all categorized a gift and covered under the act. Prohibited activities. Municipal employees are prohibited from soliciting or accepting, even soliciting a gift from any prohibited source. Now that word again, who's a prohibited source? C, the definition, A, a person seeking official action, B, persons doing business or seeking to do business, C, persons conducting activities regulated by an employee, D, persons having an interest that may be substantially affected by the performance, E, it's terrible, registered lobbyists, F, an agent or spouse or immediate family member who is living with prohibited So that is the people, the prohibited activities that are related to who are the prohibited sources that are really covered under the act. There are exceptions, of course. Springfield would definitely have exceptions to this, and we've attempted to provide you a few of them. a few of them, there's more. I think it's interesting that the state legislature has decided that when you get the $76, you've spent too much, and that you've got to consume it on the premises. You can cater it too, I guess, but it's just kind of interesting. And that when you get to $101 for a, in one calendar year, you've exceeded the amount that you can spend, that a prohibited source can spend on an official. The fourth one is among yourselves, there's an exemption between each other. This is just, speaks for itself, employee does not violate the act if the employee promptly takes reasonable action to return a prohibited gift. That's the statute, and we have in fact adopted the state statute in the Elmhurst Code. So, if you want to see it in full detail, you can look at the Elmhurst Code, we've adopted it, and it's there for your perusal.
I guess before we proceed with the committee, the whole material, were there any questions for Mr. Socol, Mr. Starino or Kate?
Officer 11.
Is there a doggy bag exception? No. Are aldermen considered to be employees for the purpose of the gift ban?
You are prohibited, except among yourselves, as I said, but you are covered. You are covered.
Thank you. Oliver Brown.
Yeah, the only question is on page 11, the first slide on page 11, which is the third bullet item, and I'll read it out loud. The Open Meetings Act now requires that any person be permitted an opportunity to address public officials at meetings subject to the act, under rules established and recorded by the public body. I understand that for the city council meetings, how does that impact our committee meetings, though? Because I know in the past, it's really been up to the chairperson if they allow the public to speak during those committee meetings. Is this mandating now that if someone from the public comes into the committee meeting, that they have to be allowed to speak?
The simple answer is yes. It's a great question, the law changed January 1, 2011, and now, at every public meeting, public will have an opportunity to speak. Can have regulations and restrictions and rules about when and for how long, et cetera, but the public will be permitted to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. As we suggested, part of the orientation on policies and procedures would follow, try to follow frankly, the way Elmhurst City Council has broken its operations down over the years, and the Elmhurst City Council has divided its work up into work really being done by the city council in the formal setting, as example this evening's activity, city council operating as a committee of the whole, and then the city council as it divides itself into the four standing committees. So, tonight we'd like to just quickly go over some of the work that has in the past, at least, been directed to the committee of the whole by the council itself, or by the mayor, by the scheduling of meetings. Typically, what has been studied by the council as a committee of the whole are those items that are of such import that they affect so much that rather than send it to a smaller body of the council, being a committee, the committee has been determined to be the entire city council in a workshop fashion. So, budget workshops are a committee of the whole, certain major projects in the past have been committee of the whole. And in the past, the flood mitigation study work, the stormwater sanitary management has been done as a committee of the whole. As the two most recent large public-private project opportunities in the Central Business District, TIF, the Addison Avenue Development and the Han Street Development, have emanated from work coming out of committee of the whole. Budget, as an example, is a large project of the entire city council. It's, I think, truly identified as the most significant policy document that the city council addresses on an annual basis. We have identified, at least from a preliminary perspective, how that budget activity would break out for the next fiscal year. Did review this in a preliminary fashion with Mayor DeCiani. I certainly understand that the council itself is in a transition with the manager and a manager transition. I would anticipate that the next manager and the city council and the mayor and the attorney will be spending a lot of time in evaluating how best that team within the city council will reorganize themselves for effectiveness and productivity, and how best to have success going forward. This has been a bit of the calendar that has been used in the past. I would anticipate something like this would be developed going forward. This calendar also is developed according to the state statutes that says for a budget officer format of budgeting, which Elmhurst has adopted, that that budget itself must be approved by the city council before the beginning of the fiscal year that that budget is involved with. So, this calendar provides that the operating budget, way down on the bottom there, is approved theoretically the first meeting in April. You would have the third meeting in April still in play before that next budget year would begin on the 1st of May. So, it's just a bit of an overview of how that budget activity is broken down. Something like this, I would anticipate, would be developed and formally presented a little bit later in this coming summer. Looking back, this is how the current budget for the 11-12 fiscal year has been broken down. This material is now, has a budget been approved by last year's city council. All of this material is available on the city website. At direction of the council, the city website is being used more and more and more as the go-to place, as Kate indicated. The city clerk's office and the FOIA officers and departments are posting items on their portions of the city website so that the material is available for the broader community. It's a tool, folks request information, frequently they're getting their own information now off of the city website. As an example, the ninth bullet down under the 11-12 budget is budget and financial policies and procedures. Don't want to get into all of those policies and procedures, but if you were to go to that and click on it, you would have all of the pages of the budget from page 319 through 354 to review, to go over all of those council policies. Those policies have been developed by the city council of the past, and until changed by a future city council, they are relied upon by city staff and the community to help guide and control the operations going forward. I don't believe it appropriate in a time constructive fashion to review these in an open meeting tonight, but it is, depending on the committee that one might be assigned to, it might be appropriate to review these policies over time, to acquaint yourself or remind yourself of that policy. There's a lot of wisdom that has been applied to these documents, and they do guide the city operations in a significant way, day to day, week to week. Other material that would be in the category of policies and procedures that can be found on the city website are summarized here. The whole municipal code, the comprehensive plans, budgets, citizen surveys, et cetera. There's a huge amount of material that is available to serve as a guide for the community. Going forward, we would anticipate that the committee of the whole would continue on with the work that has been started in the past 12 months. As the consultant for the city, the Burke and RJN team completes their design work, their field work, their investigation work, they'll be reporting back. They are giving us a written report on a monthly basis that will be part of our third Monday of each month's agenda. That material will then be posted on the city website. The task force will be reviewing those studies, those reports, and providing their advice and their recommendations to the city staff that is facilitating that work, then forwarding the material onto the consultant, and allowing the consultant to understand the task force's advice and recommendations to allow for ideally at least the best possible working document of a report coming out of that study that will eventually go to a committee of the council and onto the city council for approval of whatever actions would be judged appropriate. Another example of committee of the whole work would be the Central Business District's tax increment financing efforts, and the higher public-private projects that are a part of that. This identifies Phase 1 of the Addison LLC project, that is the parking structure built at First and Larch. Coincidentally, there was a question under the public forum earlier in regards to this as it relates to a grant that the city of Elmhurst was successful in receiving from Metro for $2.5 million to help finance this project. City staff has been working with the attorney's office and with the attorneys at Metro to find at least from a staff perspective and an attorney's office representing the city's perspective, reasonably appropriate vehicle to allow Metro to consider, which would allow them to then release that $2.5 million. We believe, based on an email from the attorney's office at Metro last week, that we're close. They've asked for a lease, very similar to the lease that they have applied on the previous grants to the city. They're seeking now a 40-year lease, which is again the same year timeframe that they provided in the past, so that Metro would have, through that lease, control on the parking spots that were constructed so that they control those public parking spots for all-day parking use. We believe we found a way for Metro to accept about half of the deck, along with some of the spaces that were constructed along the surface of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks, and thereby, with their acceptance of that, the city council's acceptance of that, they would be able to convey full payment of the value of that lease in advance for the 40-year period, which is the value of that $2.5 million grant. We anticipate, based on that email from the attorney's office, we'll be getting those documents in draft form, and probably bringing that to, I think, in that that's a lease document for this project, that would go to the Public Works and Buildings Committee for their, for the finance committee. We'll work with the mayor and the two committee chairs to see which committee and the attorney, which of those committees that detail would best be placed at. The original work on the full deck, though, was a committee of the whole assignment, and I digressed into the answering of the question of where that $2.5 million is, because it's very important to us and to you. The next phase of that project is the second phase, which is shown here, which is the construction of a mixed-use project on the Thorn site and Old Athar Restaurant site. The concept is for a mixed-use project of retail, first floor down the Schiller Court Alley and up Addison Street, with parking behind it and parking above it, and possibly two floors of office above the retail section that's fronting Addison Avenue. The details of that are still being vetted by the private-side developer. Private-side developer by contract is responsible for the leases on that standing building, the Thorn building, and as they complete those lease negotiations to empty the building, they'll be back and they'll be working with the committee of the whole relative to the next phase of a contract that would involve the demolition of buildings and the construction of that mixed-use project. So, again, looking forward, that would be committee of the whole work of this city council going forward. The other big project to look forward for is the Han Street Development Project. That project is still a very viable project when the timing is right. The economics have pushed the timing of this project back a bit, probably changing the, some of the specifics of that project from what was first designed as a combination of townhouses and condominiums and retail space, shifting it probably to deluxe apartment spaces, rental spaces, as opposed to condo spaces. The developers continuing to work on those concepts. A key part of this is the contract for the only not currently owned and controlled by the city piece of property, the piece of property that is the Pawlite property, that's still in private ownership, but the city's contract partner has a contract to purchase that. That contractor continues to keep that contract in play and in current active status as that piece of property is a key for the assemblage and a key for that project to be successful going forward. We would anticipate, again, that the committee of the whole of the city council will be involved with this as items go forward. Other work of the city council is divided into the four standing committees of the council, the Public Works and Buildings Committee, Public Affairs Safety Committee, Finance Committee, which also deals with administrative services, and Council Matters, Council Affairs Matters, the fourth committee, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee. As Mayor DeCiani suggested, next Monday, next Monday, we'll be reviewing what we would anticipate will be work looking forward for these four committees, and we'll be anticipating that that material will be divided up amongst the city council based on the mayor's appointments, which need to be approved by the city council. Normally, next Monday would just be a committee night, but because we could not get the committees approved, tonight's council meeting, we'll be calling next Monday as a special council meeting, as Attorney Starino indicated, with proper notice. Provide proper notice to the community, to the press, that the beginning of the meeting next week won't simply be a committee of the whole meeting to review general items, it'll be a special council meeting to allow the work identified on the agenda to be considered and, if approved, approved going forward. In that regard, the mayor's recommendations to the standing committees will be presented to you in the Thursday packet for the Monday meeting, if then approved by you on the Monday meeting. Those will be the committees that will be then in play for the next council year. We'll anticipate in the workshop then reviewing work that will be going before these four committees, and at the appropriate time, breaking into the actual committees, allowing the committees to work for a period of time next Monday night in committee format. the committees to work for a period of time next Monday night in committee format. Any questions? Again, embedded in the meeting next Monday, we'll provide, with each of the staff's liaisons, which are assigned to the four committees, they'll be introduced to you. There's no changes from what you've seen in the past. The Public Works Director is the major liaison to the Public Works Committee, the Finance Director is the major liaison to the Finance Committee, et cetera. They'll be here next Monday night. We'll go through an overview of that work, as we see short-term and long-term that will be scheduled, before those four committees, and my understanding is, the mayor would provide that the committees would actually break out and have a breakout session for a little bit of the evening, to allow the committee to begin to work with the committee liaisons.
Very good. Questions, discussion? Well done, City Manager Borcher, well done, City Attorney Storino, along with his assistant. We appreciate all your help, and he's very, very informative. Moving on our agenda, we've got other business, anybody with other business? Hearing none announcements? Anybody with announcements? Brock Spencer, you have any announcements?
No announcements this evening.
No announcements?
Oh, I have one. It's a National Police Remembrance Week, so for all downed police officers, it's a national week for remembering our police officers, so please do that.
Very, very good. City Manager Borcher, give a hand up.
Just a quick announcement. The city staff will try to keep all of the council informed, and certainly the Public Works Committee, about the I-290 planning process. Alderman Bram asked earlier, what's the status of the Elgin-O'Hare corridor planning effort? In a similar fashion, IDAT has now begun a planning process of I-290 from basically Cicero Avenue out to Hillside. Doesn't involve Elmhurst in specific planning, but that corridor certainly affects Elmhurst as Elmhurst folks use it going into Chicago and coming back from Chicago. Will be, from a city engineering perspective and public works perspective, involved in the planning process, and keep the council posted. That's all I have to announce.
Okay. Alderman Levin?
This Friday, from about 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. till 2:00 o'clock, we'll be cop on top at the Two Dunkin' Donuts. There'll be some police officials, high-ranking, some celebrity aldermen might be up on the roof, soliciting people to come buy a donut for a good cause, and it's not just for the donut, so if you're buying your coffee that morning, those Two Dunkin' Donuts will be featuring that program.
Very good. So it's a nice tribute to our local law enforcement officials that work hard for us and do good things, so. I believe all that money goes to the Special Olympics, actually, for the torch run, if I'm not mistaken, so, good cause. City Manager Borcher.
One more quick announcement. I'd be remiss to not take the opportunity to say thank you very much to the Planning Committee of the Heritage Center that hosted a party last Friday night. On my behalf, and all of the members of the city council, you're all very, very kind. Your presence and your kind words and your donations on my behalf to the Heritage Center are something I will never forget. I'm indebted, and thank you very much.
It was our pleasure, for those who attended, which were many, we had a full room, and it was a great tribute to a great man who served this country, or served this city and countrywide.
County.
And we appreciate his hard work, and, yeah, yeah. It was fun listening to his pastor, he did a good job, so. Anybody else? Announcements? Okay. Hearing none, I guess for motion to adjourn, Alderman Morley, second by Alderman Guttenkopf. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Aye.
Hold on.